Two items under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1. Appointments, Town Manager.
So moved.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please ma'am?
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
And then we will do the Pledge of Allegiance. That'll be led by Councilman Dawson, followed by the invocation by Councilman East, if you could stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd like to join us in prayer, please bow your heads at this time. Heavenly Father, as we come together this evening, please watch over us. And as we conduct the business of our town, please grant us the wisdom to do so. We thank you, Heavenly Father, for your continued blessings, and in your name we pray. Amen.
I'd like to welcome all of our guests, in person and online. Thank you all for coming out and supporting your town. I don't think there's any modifications to public, so we'll start with our presentations. That's going to be Veggie Incorporated by Cody Jurnell. That will be a fifteen minute. He's right there.
There you go.
You just do that at him and he does.
Thanks for having us. We've been actually working fairly diligently on this project for coming up on a year now, right in Pulaski's backyard with the Jefferson School. So it's always a good time for us to actually start sharing our message and what we're doing here in town. As you can see in the slide, my name's Cody Jurnell. I grew up here in Giles County. Was, I have a background in real estate, own a brokerage and a property management company in Blacksburg, and also am one of the partners trying to bring Bluegrass Barbecue here to town. So we've got a restaurant over in Giles County. Keeps us busy along with my two kids at home, so. But I'll let Luke introduce himself whenever he come up. I'm sure you guys are very familiar with Luke at this point, so if you don't mind going to the next slide. So we won't get into our advisors just to kind of keep things brief, but we have been putting a pretty stellar team together to back this project that we're doing. And I know we kind of missed the first slide to give you the, really, the overall view, but we are, we are taking old abandoned schools and historic structures and redeveloping them into vertical farming facilities. So it's a high-tech project. There's a lot that goes into it from the construction side, the technology side, the agriculture side. So we really, this team right here that we're putting together is a, going to be a big proponent in us being successful with this project, so. So kind of want to back up to what got us here. You know, I won't get too into the weeds with the problems, but our agriculture in this country is really starting to suffer when it comes to production and trying to keep up with our, our growing population. So as we were going through and doing some research, we really, we landed on some, some really key metrics. And one was that in the U.S. we lose almost 2,000 acres of farmland per day to redevelopment. So we have less farmland to produce the, you know, the produce and even the livestock and animals that we need with a growing population. And at the same time, the way that our, you know, government sanctions and just the overall consumer in America is trending, we're also having to do that in a more environmentally and, you know, smart and sustainable manner. So it creates a lot of challenges in the agriculture sector. But with that said, there is a, some advancements in technology that have moved forward that are kind of combating that. So we'll go to the next slide. You can see from this picture, this is a fairly typical vertical farming setup. You know, there's, there's trays, there's towers, there's different ways to do it. But when you're really looking at it overall, the advancements in LED technology, in hydroponics, in AI and robotics, we're able to take a lot of this produce and stuff that we've grown outside for, you know, our whole existence and bring it inside. A lot of this technology, you know, you've been able to, from what you can grow in a ten-acre field outdoors, you can bring inside and grow up, and you can produce almost just as much produce in a one-acre footprint as you could ten acres. There's no, you know, there's no pesticides used in these facilities. They're in a controlled environment. They don't have to worry about the elements of Mother Nature. So you're not having, you know, winter months where you can't grow things. You're not worrying about hurricanes decimating your fields, things along those lines. So this is really one way that we're, we're certainly not taking over the, the farming practice, right? But there are gaps in our agriculture system that need to be filled, and they need to be filled in a smart manner, and, and this is helping us trend towards that. So with that said, there's still some issues in the vertical farming space. And this is really where our business model kind of stands out from others in the space. A lot of companies, whether they're just trying to get their foot in the door or they already have a vertical farm and they're trying to expand, are having a lot of trouble with that because of the high capital requirements that it costs to get into the space. A lot of that comes from real estate, you know, just land in general is super expensive. Doing any sort of, any sort of building or development of a building or ground-up construction is super expensive. Even the equipment costs that go into these things are super expensive. So that is a huge barrier of entry for a lot of vertical farming companies at the moment. We've done over a hundred customer discovery calls at this point, where we're calling people in and around the industry, trying to figure out, you know, what's your biggest pain point, what's keeping you from growing? You know, even some have, have failed over the last couple of years as interest rates have gone up and things like that, which has exposed the very tight operating margins that their capital cost requirements put on their produce. So on top of that, they're building these, these buildings very inefficiently because of cost. Again, you know, they, they throw up these metal containers that are kind of warehouse-type buildings, but there's a lot of leakage in and out of the CO2 and things along those lines. So a lot of these places have to burn fossil fuels and a lot of extra fossil fuels to supplement the CO2 for the grow systems. So go to the next slide. Kind of where the Jefferson School and what we're trying to do plays into this, we are going to take historic schools, use historic tax credits and some other government subsidy items to provide high-tech leasable space to vertical farming companies. So instead of them having to go out and put all this debt on their books, you know, at the very beginning, build these facilities from scratch, we're able to go into rural communities like Pulaski, use a historic structure that already exists, turn that around and be able to offer leasable space at a much lower rate than what they would have in a mortgage or if they went out and tried to do this themselves. On top of that, obviously, you know, we talked about the, the environmental impacts and the sustainability of this project. You know, Mova, I'm sure everyone here is, has pretty familiar with them as well. The right in our backyard in Pulaski, we're, we're going to utilize their sequestered CO2 to be able to grow the produce in our facilities without having to burn those fossil fuels to grow our produce. So, you know, from just a holistic standpoint, we're taking an existing building, redeveloping it instead of building from the ground up. So that already offsets your carbon footprint there. We're going to use solar panels, you know, recycled CO2. We're going to capture rainwater, recycle it. And our goal is to make this a one-of-a-kind, carbon-negative growing environment, which is not something that exists on the current market. So that's our, our business model. I'm going to let Luke here now get into the, a little bit more of the weeds on, on how we're going to make it happen. So appreciate you guys.
Hi, Luke Allison. How you doing, man? Chief Development Officer for Veggie Inc. And, uh, next slide, please. Yeah, so this is, you've heard this before. How do we make these projects actually feasible, not just for the developer foot, but for those that locate in the facility? So because of the, the tax credit portion of this, we can borrow forty-five, thirty-five to forty-five percent less money of traditional funding. And now that's the mortgage that we're, we are, we have the leases that are trying to pay those mortgages. So by having the facility, go back one slide. By having this whole facility, this member of our community, part of the heritage of this community, a building that has already, has its embodied carbon fifty percent less than a building the same, same size as it, that's built new, we will be able to rent out all of the spaces, a vertical farm in the auditorium and the wings for other controlled environmental agriculture companies. We have three other letters of intent from different companies in the space, whether they manufacture equipment or whether they are growing, producing different fertilizers or Mova technologies, for instance, doing some, some research in this facility. Go forward. So with that, those companies can rent this space almost fifty percent less than what they would if they were to locate in a newly constructed space. And that's like, that's the, the whole purpose of this, is to create this affordable location that otherwise doesn't exist for companies in this industry. And then traditional financing, and the more that we can close that gap with private investment, the lower we can get that mortgage, the better that we can, the lower that we can reduce that monthly rent for those CEA companies. And then all of those acronyms at the bottom, y'all all know those. And when it comes to climate smart and when it comes to fresh produce and healthy foods in rural communities and rural redevelopment, those entities have a lot of funding sources for projects like this. Tobacco Commission is obviously west of here, but that's where we are going to expand after our pilot project here in Pulaski. So the really, really cool stuff, the technology that makes this possible. So it's a climate-smart redevelopment by utilizing the existing building. Again, fifty percent less carbon dioxide than the same square footage as new construction. And because it's a brick structure, it has a high thermal mass. So you can regulate its temperature better compared to a big metal warehouse that traditional, like current CEA operations are constructed in. We'll have solar, wind, and a lot of the electricity for the community is hydro right now, I believe. So really, this is going to be truly a, a carbon-free produce once we get to the end of it because of the recycled supplemental CO2. So instead of burning natural gas and having it run through a filter to filter out the volatile organic compounds and adding the CO2, we're going to sequester the CO2 directly out of the atmosphere. Mova Technologies has partnered with Veggie and just got awarded a Department of Energy grant, an SBIR grant, to do just that. To capture direct, to capture carbon dioxide directly out of the atmosphere, take that CO2 and use it inside a grow operation, harvesting that as a valuable resource, not as something that is pollution that needs to be thrown away. And that will result in a carbon-negative product that can then be sold as such. And I don't want you to go forward anymore. That's as far as I want us to go, so.
I will say one more thing. Hold on. So we are in our fundraising stages at the moment. You know, a lot of times we have kind of an ask whenever we do a presentation like this, but it is more of a info session at this point. So, you know, we're, we're raising money through private funds and, and government funds at the same to pay off the note for the building, make sure that we can secure it and do the project that we want to do. A lot of the research that's going into the CO2, some of the strategic partners that we're putting in here to make sure that they can bring us the tenants, they can work with us on our economics. But our ask today, I guess, is just to keep this in the back of your mind. You know, if anything comes up where you think that you could help facilitate what we're doing or if we hit some roadblocks and, you know, and come to you guys and say, hey, we're trying to figure this out. Please help us out. You know, that's, we kind of wanted to be upfront, let you know everything that's going on in your backyard. And, you know, a lot of people here, and when we spoke with the Board of Supervisors and everyone, they've either went to the Jefferson School or have family members that went to the Jefferson School. So seeing it in the state that it's in now and knowing that something could come in and really revitalize that area of Pulaski is, is what we're really trying to do. And we want to replicate it in other towns as well, so.
And to answer a question before it's asked, you know, we do not want to compete with local farmers. That is something that we've, I've given a present, given a presentation to down in Dulfield and Norton regarding some of their vacant school buildings. And this being the pilot project in Pulaski, but we are actually working with Appalachian Sustainable Development. This is an organization that has, they facilitate the distribution of produce throughout the entire region and know the supply and demand. So if there is something that is really challenging to supply in a region, whether it's broccoli or soybeans or whatever, like they know, they know that gap. So instead of going in and, and being competition for any of these, these growers, we actually will just facilitate to supply that product that has high demand, but it's just not, simply not there.
And stuff that's not able to be grown by a farmer per se, so. You know, there's a lot of deforestation when it comes to like ginseng and, you know, other herbs that grow out in our forests that have to be picked and, you know, don't grow back for another two years or something like that. A facility like this can really control that, control that grow process to where the, the yield turns over a lot quicker and we're not going out and, you know, destroying our environment in the process, so. Take any questions you guys might have?
I have a question, well, more of a, to Luke here. You know, every time you come up here, when I first went in the military, had a recruiter told me, you always shoot for the moon and if you miss, you'll hit a star. So every time you come to that podium, I feel like you're shooting to the moon. And even if you don't hit that moon, you're going to hit a star. And I'm tickled to see that someone is taking the Jefferson School and, and going to make something with it. Now, we have the Calfy Project and that old school, and hopefully in the near future, we might have use for another school. Won't get into that. But the question I wanted to ask you, what, how deteriorate, deteriorate is that building? Because I, I went to school there.
Yeah.
I, I, many, many years ago, but is, is it in very bad shape?
Bones are actually pretty good, surprisingly. Yeah, we've, you know, we've walked through it multiple times and with our architect and engineers and things along those lines. And, you know, it's pretty solid. Our biggest issue right now is the water in the basement. So we've been, you know, kind of going back and forth on how to pump that out and keep it from happening because that is kind of under the water table. But there's possibilities that we're exploring with the architect to potentially use that water coming through as part of the holding mechanism for the water that's used in the, in the grow operation. So we would almost make it like a, you know, a tank down there that collects the water, filters it out and through the grow operations. And it's a way to kind of use our natural resources instead of hooking through the grid in the, in the, in the town. But yeah, overall, I mean, obviously needs to improve. The one wing needs to be rebuilt that was burnt down. But when it comes to like the structure and everything along those lines, surprisingly.
They don't make them like they used to.
Yeah, exactly.
That's a, that is a, that is a tank of a building. It really is.
I know, I know those, that the folks on this side of town will be very tickled just to get it cleaned up and you guys, you know, to move forward the project, so. I know.
At the end of the day, it really is about the community because that's thirty-five thousand square foot of blight.
That's a lot.
In the building and the, the tax basis that it adds to the community. It's not even there. So this is something that really is, you can remove that much square footage, that, that much blight. It really does make a lasting impact on the community, so.
Who currently has ownership of the property?
JS Properties, JS Pulaski Properties LLC. That's four of our partners that are on our advisory board. And our, we, we are going to be buying it from them at cost. So the price that they paid for the building. Plus, we actually have a budget right now of, of $600,000 that we're raising. So we're going to pay the building off, working with Mova Technologies, doing our first round of research and development to capture carbon dioxide and sequester it in an actual grow operation in the facility. That's seventy-five thousand dollars of our budget towards that. And the rest is really to, to prep and stabilize the building as we move forward towards developing this facility, so the, the construction.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, I'd just remind you that the county and the town participated in equal shares to allow for the purchase of the Jefferson School about a year and a half ago because of our interest not only in seeing the building restored, but in hopefully bringing a new business or industry into the community. So you've been on board in terms of its actual purchase, and it's just great to hear that they're finally plans for its adaptive reuse.
Yeah, we told them that they buy it, we'll find something to do with it. So they bought it and y'all made that possible. So here we are, we're putting a lot of time and effort into this. We have a company from South Carolina that's really helping us with the research and development. Virginia Tech has stepped in, their name's on this. And then we have a company out of the United Kingdom that is consulting us through this process, and they are world-renowned for indoor grow operations, and they have never heard of a business plan like ours. And they, they want to take this as far as, that we, that we can through rural community revitalization.
Is this sort of something like a ransom form?
Similar, yeah. Something similar to that. Red Sun is very, um, they, they're, they are controlled environmental agriculture, but they are technically a greenhouse. So this is, like you saw the racks earlier, it's a completely closed-in system, and they use LED lights. A lot of times these, the lights are on eighteen hours a day. But they can, you know, through their, their softwares and algorithms and AI, they can, they can really pinpoint that grow process. So they know that, that this plant needs exactly this much light and this much downtime to have it grow as fast as possible and turnover as fast as possible. And again, Red Sun, you know, we spoke with Mr. Abbott there, and one of their big problems is they have to, they have to burn natural gas constantly to either heat the building or supplement the CO2 that's going into it. And that's a, a huge issue for them, which, you know, in this case, we can try and combat that issue as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Good luck. Thanks.
All right. Okay, with that, we'll move to the public hearing section. First one is Case 2023-ZA-001, Medical Office Definition Ordinance 2023-11. If I can get the staff report, please.
Hi. So this is part of an ongoing, continuing issue that we have been, you've been apprised of before. It was discovered while we were doing the rezoning for 2460 Lee Highway that our zoning ordinances did not have a definition for medical office. The Planning Commission has finalized a definition, which is medical office, or offices, an establishment in which doctors, dentists, and other practitioners licensed by the Commonwealth of Virginia provide health care services to clients, including medical or health-related physical or massage therapy exclusively on an outpatient basis and may offer minor surgical care, but do not provide substance abuse disorder services, overnight care, or serve as a base for an ambulance service. They have, they have submitted a recommendation to council that this definition be adopted into the definition section of the zoning ordinances.
Does the council have questions?
I've got a couple. The word, the phrase substance abuse disorder services, is there, is that a definition from somewhere?
I do not think so. I think it was a, a trying to, um, so there is concern among council members that they will have, I'm, I'm sorry, commission members, that there will be facilities that are solely treating mental health disorders with pharmaceuticals and not actually addressing underlying causes of addiction with.
But this definition would prohibit like counseling or?
They are aware of that, and should the need arise, they are willing to revisit this definition. However, they would like to have as strict a definition as possible until they can.
Because that would, that would preclude like the New Food City from selling Nicorette at their pharmacy.
I believe they're aware of that, yes.
So they're just.
They're.
Blanket, just any.
Yeah.
But substance abuse disorder isn't a term that's defined anywhere. So how would some, how would a potential applicant know what was included or not included? Like if you're a therapist and you're providing counseling services to somebody.
Right.
Some of it is going to be potentially, oh, I have a problem with, I, I smoke cigarettes or I drink alcohol.
Right.
So does that preclude, like if, you know, if you go to Martin's Pharmacy and you get a prescription to help you with, with like a nicotine patch, can they just not do that? See, that seems like a problem.
Yeah.
That seems like, I mean, you know, I don't want to create a, there are times where it's appropriate to, but that definition is way too broad. Like that is, I don't even think that's enforceable in any way whatsoever. Do you know what I mean?
I do understand what you're saying.
Okay. So, but they didn't provide, I mean, they didn't reference like a CDC definition of?
No, unfortunately.
Okay. So as long as it's not substance abuse disorder. So if it was something else, so if they were being treated for anxiety or psychosis, even if they were getting the same treatment that they would get for something else, it would be appropriate?
I believe so, under the medical doctor practice to, licensed to practice in the Commonwealth of Virginia Services to Clinics section, that if you have a licensed practitioner offering medical services, it would be acceptable under that, providing it is not solely dedicated to substance.
That's not what the definition says.
I'm going with what I have from commission, unfortunately.
Understand, I understand you didn't, you didn't pass it.
All possible realm of, I, I don't, I don't know. I know what their intent was. I do not know how far beyond that.
But if their intent isn't included in the definition, then we're left, I mean, we're the one enacting it, not them.
Right, I understand that.
So, I mean, it really would preclude, you know, doctors now in Virginia and pharmacists can now provide medical treatment directly to, you know, and doctors can provide medically assisted treatment to individuals. So, you know, as long, so as long as they provide, but what's the, what's the border? Can they, is it have to be one percent or fifty-one percent or thirty-five percent? It's not, there's no, there's no way for anybody to know.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
I agree.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. If not, I will open the public hearing. And if anyone has anything, any input? If not, I will close the public hearing. And is there any other questions after that?
I think Mr. Reyes raises a good question. I'm a little confused by it. It, because substance abuse disorder services has.
It's just an enormously broad term.
It has to be defined.
Yeah, I mean, because I don't even think substance abuse disorder is even a, even a definition.
I don't know.
No, I mean, because I, I looked it up because I was confused and they don't use the word substance abuse disorder. That doesn't appear in like the DSM five or anything like that, so.
It seems to me if the intent is to, just to prohibit certain types of organizations, businesses, whatever, it should be a term that is used.
Yeah.
Regularly and, and easily defined. So I, I tend to agree with Mr. Reyes. I'm not sure that, that, that I know what that means exactly.
Well, I think one thing we could do is we could pass it without that term and ask the Planning Commission to take a look at it and provide a more defined term.
I, I would not personally be inclined to do that, but I, I would like to, to, to have, have a term used that, that has, has brackets around it. If that, Mr. Riggs, do you have any thoughts on that?
You know, this came up because we, we have the definition of hospitals and medical that is very broad, that applies to more of the zones. And this is more where we, they were trying to, they analyzed and found out that they, there's a usage of the term medical office in the zoning ordinance without a definition. And they were trying to, you know, trying to apply a definition. And while they were trying to apply that, because of how it, I guess, it came to us in, in the discussion of the Lee Highway property, which that was a definition that was essentially agreed to by the landowner in that case, that that kind of continued on in their thinking as to how to define that. I would point out that, and I understand exactly what Councilman Reese is saying. The, I guess, the, the main, this is only limited to several zones. You could certainly. the, the main, this is only limited to several zones. Uh, you could certainly modify it. You could ask them to reconsider it and, and make, make the definition clearer, uh, based on what your comments have been. Um, or, you know, you.
Well, I, I just think if we pass it, it's not enforceable in any way, cause it doesn't refer to anything. So, I mean, we could pass it if we want to, but I just don't think it's enforceable. And I mean, because it's, it doesn't refer to anything that exists. Um, so like, I mean, it just would be, it would be a restriction, it would be a nullity, essentially.
You have two ways to go. You, I mean, you can, like you're pointing out, you could pass it and if it doesn't exist, I mean, you could line item, clean it up later, or you could wait. In waiting, one issue you have is that you have, uh, a term in your zoning ordinance that doesn't have a definition that's used in there. And that was the intent that was trying to clean it up. And this is just how it came about. Uh, whether, whether by directing them or not, that was, uh, an intent that they strongly felt to the point that we're dealing with it like this.
But could I ask Summer, this is actually a broader definition than what was in the recommendation on the approval of the reason.
Between last, between last commission meeting and this current council meeting, yes, they.
Right. Because you all did, um, if I could refresh your memory, uh, the recommendation from the planning commission, when the property on Route eleven was rezoned from R one to R O, they gave you a recommendation with a condition of a particular definition of medical office. But that only served a purpose for that particular rezoning. And so it went back to the planning commission to define that medical office throughout the zoning ordinance, not just with that particular property. And in going back, they added the language that Mr. Reese has raised, um, in question. So, um, as Mr. Rigus has said, you could just eliminate that and you'd be back to the definition that you approved with that one rezoning, or you can refer it back to them, um, to see if they want to do any additional refinement of that, those particular terms or that series of words that became a term, I guess is a better way to state it.
I, I think if we, if we pass this as is, based on my understanding from, from Councilman Reyes as well as, uh, Mr. Rigus, I, I think that we're not actually adhering to their, that this doesn't, this, their intent is not gonna be met, is my understanding. So I think that, that with, without that definition, I don't think we're, we're, we're doing what they intended. I, I don't, I don't think their intent is gonna be met. So with that, I would, I would be more inclined to, to push that back to have a, a more, a, a definition associated with whatever term they choose. You know, it's obvious that their intention was to prevent another substance abuse clinic, uh, a substance, you know, uh, some type of a substance, a medical facility, uh, from, from entering into these, these areas under medical offices. I don't disagree with the intent. Um, my, my bigger concern is that, my bigger concern is, is that if, what is the point? If you don't, you have a term that's not defined, you're, and you're legally challenged at some point, then what's the point? So I think defining that would be critical to, to moving, moving forward with this, this definition of medical offices, what they are and what they aren't intended to be.
I have no issue with, with that request. I don't, you know, I don't know how difficult that's gonna be, um, to try and frame that, you know, in, in a way that's actually possible to frame that. And that, unfortunately, my concern would be that it may not be possible to, to frame it differently. That may be the reason that we found ourselves, you know, trying to find the words to say, you know, what, what we wanted, but, uh.
It seems.
I think the intent of the original wording that you had on the rezoning with a special exception was what they had crafted that they thought satisfied the concerns, uh, because it, as she read it out to you, it says no overnight, uh, issues and other kinds of things. I would think that for us to properly adhere to the zoning ordinance, uh, currently, you would be potentially better off to remove those few words and keep it out for now, but at least you have a definition of medical office that we can use. And then it can always be improved upon and enhanced later. And that part of it, in my mind, you would refer back and say you need clarification or better definition. But to not pass anything tonight means that we still do not have a definition of medical office in our zoning ordinance if someone comes in and makes application. Um, so that would be my only concern because it will take, um, another month and a half probably by the time you look at the dates of meetings for us to have something.
Just given.
And they actually wanted you all at your rezoning of that property to make it official at that time, but that was not possible because it had not been properly advertised as a definition.
Well, with it removed, with that particular, you know, section removed, at that point in time, it wouldn't necessarily make that okay or not okay. And if something came up in question of it in the future, prior to, you know, prior to being redefined, then at that point in time, it would just have to be brought into question whether it, it, that question could be answered at that time of, of a request of whether or not it was possible, cause it would not be listed as being an option or not an option. Is that right?
I think that's correct.
Yeah. Essentially what you're saying is that it wouldn't be necessarily approved or disapproved. It would really matter about the particulars of that particular thing. Cause right now, I mean, what I think what they're saying is right now, anybody can, you know, if they say that they're a medical office and you locate in one of these sections, you can do that. There's, there's absolutely, and you know, how you define medical office is just totally wide open, you know? So.
So I think it's kind of closing the bar and door part of the way, but not all of the way.
Do you wanna make a motion?
I'll make, I'll move that we adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eleven with the subtraction of the word substance abuse disorder services. I'll second.
And, and I have comments. Um, so currently medical offices are not defined. And in that case, anything is possible. What if we were to adopt it with that terminology? And I'll ask you this, Mr. Rigus. If we adopt it with the terminology versus adopting it without the, that, that terminology, substance abuse disorder services, how do those two, at the end of the day, differ? Does that make sense? Well. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I, I feel like this is important and needs to be understood.
The fact of the matter is, I think you're still planning on trying to, to, the, the planning commission would still be trying, trying to develop a cleaner definition of that, uh, to sort it out. So what would happen is, e- even if, for instance, like Mr. Reese is saying, it, it's unenforceable, it would have to get to a level of somebody assessing whether it was unenforceable. It's not to say that you do something wrong, uh, from the start intentionally, but you, you could leave it as is, refer it, you know, and, and at least ask the planners to go back and look at this definition and clean it up for, to have something that would be more correctly enforceable going forward. And at least you would be less likely in that to have some sort of situation where somebody tried to locate something by saying, it's, it's, it's easier to say, well, we might not know what exactly this definition is, but we're, we're laying out words to try to describe it, rather than leaving it out, which would imply that it's not prohibited at that stage. So that would be the difference between accepting it as is and modifying it later versus modifying it just because you don't know the exact definition. Because, for example, there could be other sequences of words throughout the entire zoning thing that might not exactly have a definition.
Well, in fact, there are a number of those. And, uh, you probably didn't connect with it when Summer mentioned that this was one of what will be a, a number, because we have identified that there are a number of, of activ, what I call activities or businesses that aren't clearly defined that we're gonna have to bring through the planning commission to.
And, and, and I'll just add, in, in my limited experience, we've, we've, we, we went down this road from a legal perspective some years ago, and we had some very sharp attorneys that were able to poke holes in whatever they chose to poke holes in, or at least things that weren't well-written or well-defined. Um, so kudos to them, not so much to the town of Pulaski. Um, so with that said, I would be more inclined to, to move forward, and I know we have a motion on the floor, but to, to move forward as is with the caveat that we work on the, we go back and work on the definition. Um, so is that something that we would automatically redirect to the, uh, or, or ask of the, the planning commission to, to try and better define that? Or does it fall into a crack somewhere?
No, you, you could certainly do that. I mean, you, you could, you, one, you'd need to react to the motion and second on the floor as to how you would do it, uh, which if it, you know, in that circumstance, if, if it was approved, it would be approved with the language taken out as Mr. Reese has made the motion. If you vote, vote it down and then somebody makes another motion to accept it as is, then you could go back and say, refer it back. You know, we would, we would like the planning commission to look through, you know, defined terms to clean that up, uh, to, for that few words within the, the rest of the definition. So you're at least establishing a definition and just asking to clean that up further. That's not a problem. So you could just refer that to staff to look at and ask the commission to take a look at it.
Okay. So, so regarding the, the, uh, motion on the floor to remove the substance abuse disorder services, uh, within the text, uh, I, I would vote no.
Well, and I guess if you, if the mayor calls a question, that's, that, that, i- is there any more discussion then?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And, and then do you want to, like, pull, like, he could pull his.
No, just.
Just go, okay. Just go ahead and then.
Where you are.
Okay.
It, the motion and second.
All right. Let's just go ahead then.
If there's any more discussion, you can have it. If there's no more discussion, you can call the question. Vote on it. And then if some, if, depending on how you vote on it, then what you might do next as far as a motion.
Okay. So is there any other discussion? No. All right. May I have a roll call for that then?
Mr. East?
No.
Mr. Clark?
No.
Mr. Dawson?
No.
Mr. Ratliff?
No.
Mr. Reese?
Yes.
All right. Now, does anyone wanna make a, does this, yeah, do you wanna?
I, I would move that we adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eleven as written.
Second. Okay. And then a roll call for that, please.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
No.
And do you want to send it back to them? I'll say.
And how would that, would that be through?
Just ask. I mean, just ask.
So I.
I think you need to make a, an official request as a council back to the planning commission.
Okay.
This was not a staff-drawn definition. This was language that was added by the planning commission and therefore you certainly are within your rights to refer that back, but I think it should be seen as coming to the planning commission and not to the staff to do.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would make the motion that we refer the verbiage in ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eleven, substance abuse disorder service, services, that we would refer that back to the planning commission for, um, better definition.
Second. Okay. And could you roll call that, please?
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
All right. Now we'll move to case twenty twenty-three dash Z A dash zero zero two, removing utility services ma- major from section four point one two point two dash one, and adding utility services major to section four point one two point two dash two, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash one, one, two. Okay. I'm sorry about that. That was a lot. And could we get the staff report, please, Summer?
Sure. Um, so we were, the town was approached by several, um, industrial companies that were, um, interested in doing large-scale, um, renewable energy production and, um, uh, storage. And that raised a question among the planning commission, um, as a result of a staff report, um, because we thought there was gonna be some zoning considerations that were gonna need to be addressed. Uh, turned out that our zoning, where they were wanting to put, um, the various properties, uh, ended up zoning fit. Um, one of the, one of the definitions in which the zoning fit is utility services major, which is a buy right in I two zones. Um, heavy, I believe there, that's the heavy industrial zones. Um, and the question among the commissioners was raised that, or the issue among the commissioners was raised that with these being newer technologies that, um, are not necessarily well, um, well-understood a- a- at least by laypeople in terms of health and safety considerations, um, in terms of other considerations as well, that it may be wise to move utility services major to a special exception so that questions can be asked and if necessary, conditions can be, um, implemented. It, because we currently do not have any alternative energy and green z- industry zoning, um, are right, within any part of the town other than some enable, I believe there's some enabling legislation for, um, residential solar panels upon roofs. Um, and so we, this is a, this is sort of a method, meanwhile, the, um, the planning commission is beginning to work towards developing definitions for green energy, but this is sort of the, in the interim, something that can be done to, to give the town a bit of, um, a, ability to consider, um, n- new industries that are coming into town potentially. And, and with that, the, the addition and the subtraction from buy right use in I two to a special exception in I two.
Okay. Counsel have questions for, towards that? All right. If not, then I will open the public hearing. And as I see no one jumping for the podium, I will close the public hearing. If, is there any other questions before you move on, move on it? If someone would like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash one, two as written.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that one, please?
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Okay. Next one is case twenty twenty-three dash Z A dash zero zero three, zoning map adapt, uh, adoption, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash one, three. Um, staff report, please.
Um, so after a question was raised about, um, zoning maps and rezonings in the town, um, the best that staff can guess is that the official zoning map is from nineteen eighty-seven. And while there may have been other adopted maps, they were not adopted as specified in the zoning, um, in the zoning ordinances, or at least we do not have records of it. And so to correct that and to clarify the questions of which is the correct zoning map, we have the, uh, map, we have the, the most recent map that we possess, which is a 2022 map, that we are, we are wishing to have adopted as the zoning map for the town with the condition that zonings be, any zoning pa- that was done past the date of that map be updated and upheld. Commission is, put a recommendation forth for zonings to be upheld, as well as there is plans in the works for a new zoning map to occur as part of, from a consultant, hopefully at some point in the future. And they are wanting to ensure that when that comes before council and before commission, that map is given a wide array of, and above and beyond what is required potentially, public information that, that people are aware that rezonings are occurring and that their property maybe re- have been rezoned. I believe, we, we would send out letters anyway, so I think staff will be taking care of that just by how they would handle it under the state code, but that's what they're requesting.
Any questions?
This kind of seems almost more like a clerical, you know, we need to, needn't have the, this paperwork properly a- a- approved, I guess, you know, kind of thing. What is the normal, because obviously, we do, zoning changes happen, you know, throughout a year, you know, multiple times. Does that mean that a zoning map has to be re-approved every single time we do a zoning change?
Changes have to be added to a map, and that has not been done consistently. And as Summer has gone back to validate, we can find no record where the council took action, nor did the planning commission, which would be the first step, to adopt an official map. And then that's the map that would be in place, the 22 map, that we would adopt effective tonight, if you're so inclined. That would be the map until the next time we wanted to do a wholesale map change. But in the meantime, we would be adding any rezonings that occurred.
So there was just no original map?
In 2017? Is that the one last?
I can't find, I'm thinking it's probably 1987 is the last map that I find that was actually approved.
I say, stop. The important thing is, we want a current map.
I just wanted to understand what the procedure movement, because I, I wasn't sure if that meant that we needed to be approving a new zoning map every time we changed zoning.
Every time there's a rezoning, though.
I mean, you are essentially approving a new zoning map because you're changing the map.
Right.
So, I mean, it's just like if you change a street, you don't change every street, but you do update the map.
That's why, that's kind of why.
I think that's the, probably the better way to think about it.
Okay. Thank you.
No more questions for me.
Anymore? Okay. If not, I'll open the public hearing for this. And I'll close the public hearing. Then if there's no other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance 2023-13, adopting the town of Pulaski's 2022 zoning map as written.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Next one is case 2023-SE-002, special exception for mixed-use development of 67, 69, and 73 West Main Street, ordinance 2023-14. Staff report, please.
So, in the course of applying for building permits, the 67, 69, and 73 West Main Street property was found to be in a B3 zone, which B3 zones require that a special exception be obtained for mixed-use properties. 67, 68, and 73 are going to be commercial on the bottom, residential on the top properties. And I have the site plans with me, if you would like to peruse them. And I also have Luke Allison here, who is, is willing to speak on behalf of the developers in that project, and answer any questions you have particular to the project.
I would just remind the council that 67 and 69 were, in fact, properties owned by the Redevelopment Housing Authority that were provided to the developer under a performance agreement. And under that performance agreement, they stipulated that there would be a certain number of upper-floor units, and that the bottom would be retail. And it's only as they've come forward for the building permit that it was discovered that it did not have proper zoning. Now, they have added to our 67 and 69, the other property, and they are planning to make a single building out of all of that. And so, I would also tell you that the developers have been more than willing and gracious to prorate and pay the appropriate share for the one building that was not a part of the performance agreement. But it clearly, from the time that that property was even being considered for transfer, that it would be a mixed-use facility. So this is really, I guess, cleaning up something that perhaps should have been recognized earlier in the process. And I would also say that we have determined that we should come back through the planning commission to the council and do a rezoning of that downtown area to allow mixed use without special exception. So that will be coming to you in the future.
That was going to be my question, because I, I know, you know, the, the, where the barbecue place is supposed to be going, and did we do a special exception for them?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I thought. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions before we open the public hearing? All right. Then I will open the public hearing.
I can answer any questions on behalf of Peak Creek Partners LLC. So I'm consulting for them, so if you have any questions regarding these?
How many jobs do you have?
Me? I have lost count. Hey, a lot of stuff to be done.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I will close the public hearing. And then, if there's no other questions, if someone wants to make a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance 2023-14 as written.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please, ma'am?
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Resolution 2023-38, appropriating funds to the Calfy School Adaptive Reuse Project. May I have the staff report?
Yes, or Mr. Mayor and members of council, I think you all are well-aware of the fact that the town received about a year and a half ago, funding from two state and/or federal sources totaling a little over $2 million for the Calfy School renovation. That has been designed. The total project that was designed exceeds any initial thoughts that we had about what I'll now call Phase 1, which was the space that was to be renovated for childcare facilities and the kitchen, that was primarily to be renovated for use in preparing the meals for the children. The project was bid in phases, and unfortunately, due to the passage of time, as well as the improvements that were considered as part of the project, the $2 million project came in at slightly more than $4 million. And the contractor that was the low bidder, Thor Construction, has been working with representatives of Calfy and the town for almost two months now, trying to pare down that project so that it could, in fact, move forward. The best estimate that we could get for that Phase 1 project that has been downsized considerably was $2,117,000. So, the appropriation that you have previously provided of the grant funds was shy of $117,000. And the Calfy School LLC has come forward and said they would provide that difference. And so, this particular appropriation, and we're required to do public hearings anytime, an amount is received that's in excess of 1% of the budget, which is why you have it in front of you tonight, so that if you approve, following your public hearing, this appropriation, we will then be able to move forward after a final review of the plans to award a contract and get construction started. I think you all have probably even received an announcement of a pending groundbreaking on the Aug- August the 19th, I believe, is the date. And I think you have a couple people here who want to speak to this topic. But certainly, a lot of work has been done to get us to the point of being able to award, and this is the, the last piece. Now, I certainly anticipate that the Calfy School will probably be coming forward in the future with other grants, because I know they have made application to some other sources. In fact, you all are familiar with the fact that late last fall, in anticipation of an EDA award, the council had authorized, along with the counties, the necessary match money. So that grant, as well as others, we would anticipate coming forward in the future to eventually do other phases of the project. But right now, the sense of urgency is to get something in place and to meet the performance agreement requirements that we have for the two state grants, as I say, just over $2 million.
Any questions? Then I'll open the public hearing, and if anyone would like to speak.
Bertram, first of all, I'm Mike Barber. I'm a member of the Calfy Board. I want to thank the council and town manager for just your steadfast support throughout this project. I won't repeat what Ms. Bertram has already told you. I'm just simply here to state that we have cash that we have raised through fundraising for, really, for the past three years, that is available immediately to satisfy the $117,000 additional appropriation that you're being asked to approve tonight. We have also received a national park service grant in the amount of half a million dollars. That's 2023 federal budget year appropriation. We had hoped that that money would be available in the near term. We have been advised by the Interior Department that they are still processing fiscal year 22 grants. So, we're looking at perhaps another six months or so before that grant is available to us. And as Ms. Bertram indicated, you certainly anticipate that we're going to be moving forward in the future with the additional phases. It may be that we can do some of the additional work by way of change order. We may have to simply completely rebid some of the future phases. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you have. I also have some good folks with me, our president of the Calfy Board, Dr. Hickman, our vice president, Ms. Hash, her husband Reverend Hash, who is a graduate of the Calfy School. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
I don't have any questions. I, I just have more to, to the staff that you have. And I know you guys, I, I know, you guys have been working very, very hard behind the scenes that really nobody really knows. And knowing that I have, I know everybody's been on that board pretty much all my life, and I have every bit of the confidence that it's a 100% of good hands. And I, I will stand with you to see this project done. I will be there for groundbreaking. And I, I'm tickled you, I'm tickled you getting there. Mickey, you've worked really hard. Mr. Barbie, I've worked very hard behind the scenes, very hard. We, we, we can't add hours, though. Don't know.
In, in negotiating the, the, the changes in the, the original bid totals and getting us to this $2,117,000, you know, which is going to get us the initial site work, you know, a kitchen and a childcare, essentially. I would like to thank Ms. Bertram, because I, I'm the son of, father who ran one of the largest general contractors in, in Virginia. I spent nine summers working for him. I don't think he could have stood up in a room with Ms. Bertram, because she certainly did a, a great job in helping to, to get this, to get this to the state that we are at now, and hopefully ready to move forward. So, again, thank you, Ms. Bertram. Thank counsel.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. With that, I'll close the public hearing. And then, if someone would like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion to adopt resolution 2023-38 as is.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
I have a declaration pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3115. This track, the, the transaction involves resolution 2023-38 appropriating funds for the Calfy School Adaptive Reuse Project. I am the registered agent for Calfy CCC LLC and the Calfy Community and Cultural Center, which service I provide without charge. I am not engaged as their attorney or retained in any other matter by either organization. For the purposes of this transaction, there are three or more people who are affected by this transaction, and similarly to myself. I believe that I can participate in this transaction fairly objectively in the public interest. However, I choose to abstain from voting on this transaction in, in order to be above board. Thank you.
All right. Now we move to the public comment period. So I have this one, but is it you, Mike? Was, that was you, that was with, so, so, well, so I don't think we need the public comment period on that one, so I just wanted to make sure that you didn't have something more to come forward to. All right. So I have no other slips. So we'll move forward to the consent agenda, consideration of July 18th, 2023 Town Council minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Town Council meeting minutes from Tuesday, July 18th, 2023 as written.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that one, please?
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
We'll move on to council comments now. So, first one up would be?
I do not have anything this evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Clark?
This may date me, but I had a resident come to me about the old, taking it to the streets building. They asked if we were going to put panels back on the building. I was at a loss, so I'm not for sure.
I, I think there is an intent to put a new mural up there.
Okay.
And I think there was some discussion at some point of using Hardyboard instead of just painting on the bricks, but I don't know, that's all I know. I just know that that had been in the conversation somewhere, so I'm guessing that that's what it's from.
Okay.
If you're talking about the former Take It To The Streets.
Yes.
The owner of that building agreed that Pulaski-on-Maine, through a grant that they've received for a mural, that they could use that wall. They spent probably over a year trying to find a way to successfully remove, and you probably saw at different stages, different efforts to remove some of that, and finally decided that the best way to do it was to try to paint over. It's now been painted. I did contact James Hardy, and they provided Hardyboard.
Mr. Dawson?
I just had some kudos. I didn't get a chance to participate, regretfully, but the National Night Out in the park across the street looked like that was a huge success. And so, I know that takes a whole lot of hard work to put something like that on. I'm sure the jail and the police department and probably a lot of other town staff were part of that, so I'd just say thank you. I mean, that's probably the largest, I could be wrong, but it looked like the largest crowd I've seen down for that. I could be wrong about that, but it was, it was a big group coming in, so it looked like a lot of people enjoyed that. And just what a fantastic compliment to Ms. Bertram from Mr. Barber about the energy that you have put towards the Calfie School project and trying to, you know, a lot of times folks don't get to see those behind-the-scenes conversations that really make the wheels go around and turn an idea and thought into happening, and I thought that was a fantastic example of the work that Ms. Bertram does. And not to take an ounce of all of the board members' energy away, because you guys have done a fantastic job, but nobody gets to see that work enough, and I appreciate what you did and helping participate in that, so thank you.
Well, there were times that these three will tell you that they were not really in sync with me, but I think we got there eventually, right? Yes, ma'am.
That's all I have. Thank you. Mr. Ackley?
I got just a couple things of the, that's what he said about the night out. It was a great success. I got here a little bit early, and I think the Calfie School had the hugest crowd over there. Some of these was kind of getting aggravated, because everybody was over there, but that's all right. Everybody had a great turnout, great venue, everybody was happy. Somebody said, we had a park, I had a park back here. That's a great thing. That's a great thing. Just looking back here at Pastor Hash and his lovely wife, somebody asked me the other day about, wouldn't it be nice to come back and coach some of the, some of the individuals that I coach, like your son, Gary Lewis, football, their sons, all their sons are great athletes. His two sons are great athletes. Gary Lewis, I said, you know, that would be pretty neat. So, our church has a softball league, so I got out there and was kind of warming up that day, so probably Mickey's probably asked me to just sit on the sideline and give it up no worry about it, because I can't do it no more. But anyway, I'd sit back and look at y'all and seeing how much time has gone by, and gosh, those kids are up playing now. It's unreal, so that's all I have, Ms. Bertram. And thank staff for a great job over there. Ms. Bertram?
Your staff, with Olivia's help, who became the shopper for us, put together over $350, $350 of donations in order for us to participate as a staff in making supplies available to those young people.
Outstanding.
Awesome.
Good job.
Staff that not only went over there and worked, but made some financial contributions, and some even went to the store on their own, and then others got Olivia to do the shopping for us.
A good job.
Beyond the rest of that, Jessica McKinney was in the dunk booth for over an hour that I.
Oh, I bet.
That is hazard pay duty. I don't know how many times she got back up on that board, because they were letting kids throw the ball, and when it didn't compress it, every kid got to walk up and push the button. If she, if she didn't go in 30 to 40 times while I was there, she went in 50. So, I mean, I just have to point that out, because everybody was doing good work, but my lord, that was something.
That's above and beyond.
That's above and beyond.
I might add, I saw that water. I have been in water like that, too.
He was the only one that was in it.
No, but I was in one like that, too, once. Woo wee! Mr. Reese?
I just wanted to say, again, to say thanks to the town staff for lots of great events that have happened. I don't think I brought this up, but went, the friends of Pete Creek had a great event out at Heritage Park about a couple weeks ago, and I know some town staff were there, and there are few, if not, if there weren't, if there were 100 kids, there were 150 kids and other people out there and a bunch of other great organizations. And it's just great to see that kind of, because that's an organization that was started by the community, is run by the community, and is been such an amazing asset to our community. And also wanted to thank our outdoor facilities guy, Nate, who wasn't even able to be there when we opened the pickleball court. And apparently, I already have a to-do list from all the pickleball players for him, so I got to follow up with the, not him, not him, so other people, so. And got to display my lack of coordination and balance out there, so thanks to everybody, because I think it's been, it's so great to see people out using our facilities and just how much of a change that we've seen here in town and how, I know how hard, how much hard work has gone into making that possible. There's, money is one thing, but you still need people to get it all done and make sure it looks nice and stays nice, and I really appreciate all the hard work people doing on that.
Let me say one more thing, just not leave it alone. And if some of the people that wants to be negative on this would just come down and help with these children today and see what goes on, you sleep a lot better tonight. You sleep a lot better. Thank you.
You were talking about your phone app. Your phone in general. Okay, so apparently, I'm the one that people come to when they complain about plants and weeds and flowers anymore. There's a couple planters across the street that are in the, they're like the triangular planters over in Jackson that are overgrown in weeds. Can we clean them? And I know that they were mulching a lot of stuff. Can we check on those and see if those can be cleaned up and made look better? And the, this one, I know in a way the answer to this, the Kiwanis Park banks down by the creek. I know that they want it to be naturalized, but you can't see the new park equipment. I mean, it needs to be taken back or something. I mean, it's from Dora Highway. It's grown up again. I know that they're trying to naturalize it, but is there, can we weed eat it? Because it does, if you get too much there, I feel like it's a good haven for snakes and stuff, so. I'm seeing someone keeps pointing, and I'm thinking he wants to say something. I bet it's about the pickleball, but I don't, I knew it was.
I just wanted to tell the school members and staff, thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm the unofficial spokesperson for New River Valley Pickleball. We have 202 members, and they just think the courts are fabulous, and the word is spread, and they'll move this way and play. We've had play every day, and they're sensational, and they're state of the art. They're as fine courts that you'll find anywhere. And so, thank you so much personally for me. I appreciate all the work with Calfie, but I, thank you.
I might add that every time I've come by there, there has been people playing on, and I can't tell you when I saw people playing when it was the tennis courts. I mean, it's a world of difference in that. Do we need to move anywhere on our letter here?
I'm not going to bring that up.
Okay.
But you're welcome to go ahead.
Whichever.
Do we need to add that to our agenda if we were going to do something, or do we just need to make a motion?
I think all you need to do is make a motion if you are agreeable.
So.
I'm not going to bring it up, none of you did, under my comment.
Do you, do you want me to, or just let her?
Can we get a, just a, I guess, a staff report on it, so we can have?
I think the council and the community is aware that we've been working for probably almost two years now to try to get sufficient traction and money to renovate the McCarthy Building into a brewery. And I think most of you have, if not all of you, have met Scott Rockefeller, who's in the audience, who has been desperately wanting us to find the source of money to make this happen, as he wants to operate a brewery at that location. The town did receive notification back in January that we were the recipient of $750,000 of what is called I R F grant funds, and those are funds that are made available to revitalize buildings that have a business purpose with the goal of creating jobs and additional revenue and fractions for communities. We did get prior to that a planning grant that helped us to get some design work done for the project. Unfortunately, like the Calfie School that we were just talking about earlier, when it was put out for a bid, it came in double the amount of money that we had. The price tag was at one and a half million dollars. Again, we were very fortunate that the bidder was willing to work with the town and Scott to try to whittle that down to the amount of money that we had available, in spite of all of our best efforts and with Scott agreeing to not put in what we call Phase Two or the upper floor at this time, but to deal exclusively with the first four. We're still at $790,000, so we're $40,000 shy of what we need to actually authorize a contract and get the work done. Scott made the initial contact with the county to see if the county would be willing to participate in helping us create a contingency. At that time, we hoped we were going to come in at the $750,000 mark, and we're looking for a 10% contingency or $75,000. Since we have not been able to get beyond the $790,000, the county has agreed to allow their roughly $50,000, $25,000 from the county and $25,000 from the EDA to be a part of helping to close that gap, as well as create a smaller contingency, on the condition that the town's amount of $25,000 as a match would be spent first. So, in order to authorize a contract at $790,000, we need to appropriate from the town $25,000, and at a subsequent meeting, we'll actually bring in a resolution for you to appropriate all of the funds, to include the county and the EDA money. This is a building that is owned by the Housing Authority, and I think you all are very much aware of the fact that the Housing Authority doesn't have any financial resources, but they are the owner of both the brewery site and the Calfie site. We met with the Housing Authority last Thursday night. They very much want the town to participate and have made a request through Lane Penn. You have a copy of his letter that the town provide $25,000. I have taken the opportunity to identify within the town's budget where we could take $25,000 if, in fact, the council is agreeable to participating at this level. So, what we would need from you all tonight is a motion to have the town provide $25,000, and then it's my responsibility to make sure it comes out and doesn't have a negative impact on the budget, which I have talked with the finance director, and we've come up with a plan that I think is very reasonable to make that money available.
Then if someone would like to make a motion?
And then you'll actually appropriate that money at your next meeting, along with the funding from the county and the EDA.
So, it's a motion, are we, are we, is it the motion to give the money to the Housing Authority or just for the project?
It's for, the town will actually be the one that executes the contract, because we are, the town is the recipient.
Recipient of the I R F. Okay, so it is, it is to?
It's $750,000.
So, it is to appropriate an additional $25,000?
It's just to, because you all actually have not appropriated anything to that at this point, just, I would say the motion would be to authorize the town manager to identify $25,000 as the town's contribution to the project.
So moved. And may I have her all call for that?
Do we need a second?
He did. He had a second.
I second.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All righty. With that, we'll move to the manager's report, please.
Well, several people have mentioned pickleball tonight, and I wanted to just make sure that the world knows, not just the pickleball players, that the world knows that we have some outstanding courts now in the town. At that ribbon cutting, we had people who traveled as far as Radford, I believe, to participate in that event. And as Mr. Reese said, he even volunteered to learn very quickly the sport. But for those of you who see Mr. Hickman or Dr. Hickman out when he's in his casual clothes, he wears a shirt that speaks to pickleball most of the times that I see him. He is a real enthusiast, so we're very pleased that we have that offering. I understood that our basketball court would be lined at the same time. Unfortunately, the contractor has run into some problems. He tried to put the paint down to actually do the striping, and unfortunately, the surface, I think because of the amount of time that it's been sitting there, has gotten what I'll call dirty and needs to be power washed, so they will be coming back early next week and actually putting those lines on. But we're very hopeful to have that as another resource for the young, the not-so-young, to enjoy the outdoors here in our town. And I wanted to mention that the sculpture that I think was discussed several meetings ago has now been placed at the train station, and so it's another addition of an opportunity to see our community in a different light. I think one of you mentioned at the last meeting the fact that we had striped the parking, and that looked very nice. I would also mention that the striping has now been done at what we either called V or the Y. I'm never sure how to identify that, but the juncture of East Main and Third, and the cones have been removed, so it's now very clear. And again, traffic seems to be running very, very smoothly there, so we continue to make those kind of improvements in the town, and I'm very pleased that our staff is able to do as much as they do in a short amount of time. So, that's all that I have as my report.
Ms. Bertram, back on our pickleball court, too, I think is nice that we are discussing or have been discussing maybe in the near future budget, we can figure it out, a shelter and some picnic tables.
That's all, I've already asked.
So, you guys can get in and, and it's the mayor wants a doggy park or somewhere, too. But thank you, Ms. Bertram, for everything.
The wish list gets longer every day.
All right.
I work the wish.
With that, just the reminder of future council meeting. It will be August 15th, 2023, closed session at 6:00, and open session starts at 7:00. And as I have nothing else on the agenda, I declare this meeting adjourned.